If I tell you what I'm hearing in the woods of the song, don't be deceived by those fancy. You know, I don't want anyone to ever believe that Alan Chastney came into politics as a naive and simple person, simple in the sense of how I think. I have played that song from the time I've entered politics. And for many people, I bet you that what Spider just said, that some people are only hearing those words for the first time. Do not be deceived by those fancy talkers. And that is why action. You cannot mistake action, you know. When somebody does something for you, you don't have to rely on anybody else to know if it's true or not true. You can see it for yourself. And people in Saint Lucia are possessed with the common sense to know the difference between a fancy talker and a worker. And I am proud to be a part, the member of the party of Workers of Saint Lucia. I realized last week that I've made a big mistake. Well, I made two mistakes. The first mistake is that when I said that action speaks louder than words, I genuinely believed that that was true. But Mama Flabou, I found out, and the Labour Party has taught me that that's not true. We need action and we need words. And those words cannot come from me or from the leadership of United Workers' Party. The words must come from the people in the party who are benefiting from the action of United Workers' Party. Yesterday, I was in my constituency. And they had some young fellows, they know who they are. And they said, "Oh, we don't see you enough." I said, "Really?" He said, "No." I said, "But I'm here every day." He said, "What do you mean?" I said, "I'm here 24/7." He goes, "What does that mean?" I said, "I'm here every day, all the time." He said, "Really?" I said, "Yeah, man." I said, "You see the concrete road that you're standing on? That is Alan Chastney." When I came to the constituency, you used to have to take off your shoes and walk in the mud to get to your house. Now you can walk on a concrete carpet. Let us not forget those things. Just because they are done does not mean that we don't have to do more. But you must appreciate that we did what other people never did. Things that people only promised us. So the second thing is, I realize that despite being the leader of this party for so long, that many people, including Flabous, have somehow believed some of the stories they've heard that Alan Chastney is this foreigner and this guy who really can't relate to Saint Lucius. And I want to show you or tell you a story about me when I was seven years of age. And I want you to know that in that story is how my dreams and ambitions and ideas for Saint Lucia grew. So most of you know that my father was in the shipping. And so the biggest gift that he gave me, I did not understand or appreciate it at the time, was he would take me on his trips. And I remember that we had to go to Soufere. So the boat would arrive in Soufere and a fellow would get there with a big conch shell and blow. And then the workers would come down. That's how they used to call the workers to the boats in those days. And I was young, I was like about six years of age. And I remember that long drive from Castries to Soufere. And I was getting hot, like a young boy and hungry. So my father sent me to Kubari Estate because my family, the Montplaisirs, owned Kubari Estate. And when I went there, I was crying for my father, not ashamed to tell you that. Okay, I didn't want, I didn't know these people, I'd never met them before. And I was a young boy and I was crying. And so one of my cousins, Oline, took me. They had pigs and they had lambs and then they had a donkey. And they had a mule and then they had two horses. And there was a brown horse with a little star on the forehead. And eventually I got to know that that horse's name was Mary. So he put me on Mary, right? And when my father came to get me, I told him, "It's okay, you can go back to Castries, I'm gonna stay here with Mary." Right? And my uncle, Donald Montplaisir, realized how much I fell in love with this horse. And so he ended up giving me the horse as a gift. Now, there are some young people here, and I know there's a lot of young people here, but there are some older people here that will know what I'm gonna talk about. And so I went back down to Soufere and I took Mary on a boat that was called the Jewel. Y'all remember the Jewel? It was a boat that was going from Soufere up to Castries. And we used to go to Prince Alfred Basin. And it had a seating area in the back of the boat and it had a deck on the front, and so Mary was on the deck. And I sat on the deck with Mary, could make sure that Mary was safe till we got together. And I was living up in La Toc. And so this young boy, on some days, because he loved his horse so much, I would ride the horse from La Toc to Marsha. So when Philip J. says, "I've never been to Marsha," I'm sorry to tell him, I've been going to Marsha for a very, very long time, okay? And I went to Marsha because I was going to a school called Mrs. Patterson. And Mrs. Patterson, actually it's called Patterson's Gap if I'm not mistaken. And it was like 20 or 30 children. And you were like in one class, but you weren't in one class. So you sat on little benches and everything else. And I remember the children getting upset with me because Miss Patterson wanted something to beat the children with. So when I went home, I took one of my father's belts that he used to beat me with. And brought it down and the children go, "What? What are you doing there?" And I told you I lived, I moved to Puerto Rico. But we came home for Christmas, we came home for the summers. And when we came home for the summers, every summer we would live somewhere different. And I remember my father had bought some land in Labri, a place called Mont-Lébrun. Right? Up by where the radar station was, yeah? And we had a little wooden house up there and it had, you know, the tank to hold the water. And my family was going to go to Viewfort. What's the name of the place? No, something Nest. By the entrance of Coconut Bay, Cloud's Nest, you know, on the beach over there, right? So I didn't want to leave Mary. And I had forgotten my saddle in Castries. So boy, I just put a coca sack on the back of Mary and took a rope, tied it around her nose. "All right, okay." Now, it took me, must have been taking me about 40, 45 minutes to ride all the way down. So I remember getting there and I got all excited and I got off the Mary. And I took Mary to take Mary into the ocean, right? So we could both take a sea bath. And when that salt water touched my backside that was sore, 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 right? I pelted on the water, right? Now, it really burnt a lot, huh? So boy, I say, "What am I gonna do here?" I said, "You know what? Let me go back to Lebrun." I'm not, because I can't stay on the beach. And I rode Mary back and I remember galloping down the concrete road. And Mary was hot, I was hot. I must have fallen off Mary about four or five times, okay? And in those days, the roads were really bad and very hard, okay? And all my skin was cut up. And so when I got up there, I remember I couldn't take a shower, I stunk like hell, right? I was in pain. And so I went to sleep and I put a sheet over me. And the sheet then stuck on all my stuff, right? Another time, we rented a place at the entrance of Coconut Bay. There were some military houses off on the left. And that was the time I went to do my first communion. So I used to ride from there into Viewfort Town to go and do my communion service. And my parents would also send me in the morning to go and get bread. And so the first thing that really struck me about Viewfort was the police would not allow me to ride Mary in the town of Viewfort. So I used to have to tie Mary by the bean field school, right? And then walk into town and go buy the bread and everything else. And when I'd go in there, I would see pigs, I would see dogs and all kinds of stray animals. And I was like, "Wow, really?" And there were some new homes they built just by where the roundabout, the roundabout didn't exist in those days. And they had some like little small houses that were there. And it struck me how incredibly beautiful Viewfort was, but how underdeveloped Viewfort was. And I always remembered the beach at Sandy Beach. I remember in those days BWIA and the airport terminal was where the old, they converted to the fires, it was a wooden, a wooden terminal just off the road. And I remember in those days, when you used to travel, everybody would get up dressed like you were going to church, right? And I just was always charmed. And I think that all of us, when we first go to Viewfort, the smell of the ocean and the seaweed in particular was just a very charming thing about Viewfort. And for Viewfortians, you must know this, that all the people in the north at some point went and vacationed in the south. And you know, when halcyon days came there and then it became Club Med and all the fetes and as you got older, it became a nice place to be able to go. I say that because those memories stuck with me. The memory when I was at Kubari Estate in Soufere. And at four o'clock in the morning, we would all get up and we would go on an old mule cart, the same mule cart that they used to carry the copra in. And we would go to the sulfur springs. And we would go and bathe underneath the bridge. And the reason why you went there so early in the morning is because the cool air during the night would make the water warm enough for you to go bathe. And I remembered how refreshing that was. Now, let's fast forward. I became the director of tourism in Saint Lucia. And I remember going out, marking this thing that we called, you remember, the drive-in volcano. And for years, we would sell people on the story of going to a drive-in volcano. But the vast majority of people, if we are to be honest with each other, when they went there, they became disappointed. I mean, it was nice to drive in, but there was nothing else to do. And we were charging, if I'm not mistaken, Herod can correct me, I think it was like five EC dollars per head to go in to this sulfur spring for the drive-in volcano. And so when I became the Minister of Tourism and I spoke to Litten Lamertine and Jimmy Haynes and to Herod, and we said, "Look, why don't we develop a mud bath? Because around the world, health tourism is taking off." So they said, "What do you mean?" I said, "Well, I used to go there as a kid." Now, if it's gonna be too hot in the daytime, what can we do to make the water a little bit cooler? So what they said was, "Let's put ponds, shallow ponds, allow the water to go into the shallow ponds and then we can add the mud bath to it." And the first two months we did it, it was very successful. And then we had a very famous TV show here. Y'all remember The Bachelor? Right? And what we did is we closed down the park to allow the couple to come to do the mud baths. And from then on, one of the most attractive things to come to do in Saint Lucia was to go to the mud baths. And instead of charging five dollars, we're now charging fifteen dollars. And that is how the sulfur springs took on a life of its own. And I say that because when I tell you that regardless of wherever I travel to in Saint Lucia, everything I saw and everything I learned, I immediately thought of how it can make Saint Lucia better. That's what it was about. So when I played basketball and I played on some of the best teams and had some of the best tournaments, I did not come back home and just leave that. I spent four and a half years in the gardens playing basketball to help raise the level of basketball in Saint Lucia. I never said, I never said, "Okay, that was mine and I didn't have to share it." I've always felt the need to be able to share these experiences with Saint Lucia. So when it came to Viewfort, and I remember having a discussion with Sir John when he came into government in 2006. And he actually took me to Spider's constituency and we looked at Gros Elay. And he said to me, "Okay, Alan, why is it that Rodney Bay is developed from a tourism perspective, but the only thing that we have in Gros Elay is Friday night?" And I said, "Well, Sir John, if you go to the waterfront of Gros Elay, you'll notice that all of the buildings that are on the beach, the back of the building faces the ocean." And so he walked with me. And he saw even where Spider's home was, there was a hotel opposite the street. The balconies face the road and all the toilets face the ocean. Banana Split, if you've ever been to Banana Split, Banana Split was built into the ocean, but the wall that's in the ocean had no windows. And I said to him that this is the value that people look for. And if you could now develop that waterfront, it becomes a major attraction to now help Gros Elay grow. And I know that Spider was well on the way to developing that idea of developing the waterfront and making the waterfront an incredibly attractive area to bring even more tourists into the area. But when it came to Viewfort and he and I went down to Viewfort, and I said, "Sir John, I want us to pretend that we're in a balloon because I had thought about this for many years. Pretend that we're three, four thousand feet in the air, looking down on Viewfort. What do you see? A deep water harbor." And I know that he saw that. An international airport. And I know that he saw that. And thousands of acres of underdeveloped land. And I know that he saw that. But what he was struggling with was how to put all of those things together. And the crime that has been committed in Saint Lucia is a lack of any ambition to develop Saint Lucia. So I want to play an audio tape for you. The audio tape is of the leader of Dubai that gave this present, this speech, I want to say, 20 years ago. So before people even started seeing really what was taking place in Dubai, this is the speech that he played.
What are you trying to do here? What do you want this place to be?
I want it to be number one. Not in the region, but in the world.
What do you mean, number one in the world?
In everything. High education, health, just making my people the highest way of living.
I think to be the biggest, the tallest.
Steve, why not? Why not? If you can't have it in New York, what can we have it here?
Why are you in such a hurry? Most people would try and do all of this in a lifetime, not in five years.
I want, I want my people to live a better life now. To go to the high school now. To go to the good healthcare now. Not after 20 years.
I want it now. So all those persons who sat there for five years and all they could do was criticize, criticize and not believe what we could achieve. Because they were talking about development that was in the future. And Alan Chastney and United Workers' Party was talking about development for now. Why can't our children get the best schools now? Why can't we have the best healthcare now? Why can't we become an international city in Viewfort now? Why do we have to wait? If we know that we want better, what are we waiting for? Who cannot go to see that HI Airport is too old and is too small and does not represent the beauty of Saint Lucia? Who can not go down to where the fishermen are, in the Daiku, and not see that that's not good? Who can go to the schools and say that you're satisfied that the schools in Viewfort, the schools in the south are the best schools in the world and they're gonna give your child the best opportunity to succeed? Who cannot see that? Is it that the people of Saint Lucia don't want to be the best? Is it that you don't want a proper hospital? Is it that you don't want people to speak highly of Saint Lucia and say, "What an amazing place." We already know that we are some of the most beautiful, hospitable people in the world. What we need now is something that measures up to who we are. But I know, I know that we always vote for change. People voted for change two years ago. That's what you all voted for. Change. In 2016, what did we vote for? Change. What are people voting for around the world? Change. But the truth is, the vast majority of people are not ready for change. It's just a nice thing to say. But are you ready for it? Are you ready to stand up and to compete in the world and to become the best? Guy Joseph said it. Derek Walcott became the best. Sir Arthur Lewis came the best. Laverne became the best. Darren Sammy became the best. Julian Alfred will become the best. Why can't more Saint Lucius not become the best? When you all leave Saint Lucia, guess what happens? You all become the best over there. I want you all to become the best in Saint Lucia and that Saint Lucia is benefiting from it. So to all of us, don't be fooled by the fancy talkers. When I went to the house, what is it that made Kenny Anthony so upset to come out and talk about this nonsense in Panama? Because that was just a deflection, you know? That's all it was. What was he upset at? One, that the FDL report, which we paid a million dollars for. What's the old saying? You pay for what you get. So if you're gonna have a report now with people who are getting paid nothing in cash, but they must be getting paid something somewhere else. So they're gonna say what you want them to say. When you pay an independent company money to produce a report that reflects on them professionally, it's a proper report. It's a proper report? The reason why Kenny Anthony felt the need to do what he did? Is because he was embarrassed. He was embarrassed because the FDL report? Showed? That he spent a hundred and thirty million dollars? On the old St. Jude, an eighty-year-old building? And it was not even close to being finished? In fact? His own reports were showing that it was gonna cost another hundred million dollars? To finish St. Jude? And the reason why Guy is saying? That the FDL report has redeemed United Workers' Party? And has also redeemed FDL? Is because the FDL report said? Another hundred million dollars? But? But? You must first fix all the problems of the hospital. And at the time, we did not know? How long it was going to take to fix those problems? And we did not know? How much it was going to cost? To fix those problems? So? Building a new hospital? In our humble opinion, was the right thing to do? Now remember I told you all? United Workers' Party will fight for lives and livelihoods. Remember I told you that? And I said to you that we would never fight for the victory? Let me prove that to you. In the house? They read a letter? That was written by twenty stalwarts of our party? You listening to me? Twenty stalwarts of United Workers' Party wrote? And the cabinet a letter in 2018? Our own people? No, it's okay. Because you see, we are Democratic Party. They wrote a letter to say? That if we make a decision? To build a new hospital? We would lose the election. And they're begging us? Not to build? The new hospital. That's true. No, though, it's okay. Because in this party, I want to encourage you, if you genuinely believe something? To say so, and I want you always to feel free to say so. But Alan Chastain and the cabinet? After reviewing the letter and meeting with them? Said? We will always put? The health and the wellness of our country first? And not elections. And we proceeded to build the new hospital? And they were right? We lost the election. Some people say it was because of that reason. But if I had to make that decision again, and I was given the choice to win the election? Or give the people of Saint Lucia a proper hospital? I would always want to give you a proper hospital. And I believe that many of those stalwarts who now have seen what has transpired? Can still be members of this party, because they know we did the right thing. It's not always about doing what is going to win the election, my people. It is doing the things that are going to make this country the best. That's what we are interested, is in making this country the best! The? Kenny Anthony was embarrassed again. Because when I explained? That the reason for building the airport in the, the hospital in the south? And a bigger hospital, bigger than OKEU? Bigger than OKEU? And it was gonna be better than OKEU, because we were gonna have an international hospital there as well? Saint Lucians would not have to fly abroad, it would come to View Fort. That? That's why we have a bigger airport? By bringing the cruise ship? Terminal to View Fort? And home porting? That means you would have five thousand, six thousand people overnighting in Saint Lucia? You need to have a proper hospital for them. We're gonna be building a new university? We're building new homes? We're going to make View Fort an international city? And therefore, you needed to have world-class healthcare? First and foremost for Saint Lucians? But that everybody else who came to View Fort would benefit from the same standard? And he realized, when he looks back in the mirror at his twenty-five years? He has nothing to show for View Fort? Aye, has done nothing! When we came into government? The free zone that they built with Chinese money, you remember? And Chinese workers? Not Saint Lucian workers, Chinese workers? Were empty. We took the same empty shelves? And brought Ojo Labs and ITL BPO? And grew that sector, so that young people could get a livable wage? Twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred to eight thousand dollars a month in salaries? And if United Workers' Party was in office today? We would have tripled the size of the call centers in View Fort. And remember? That is money that's being brought into Saint Lucia to pay those young people, that is not government's money? That is bringing investors to Saint Lucia to pay Saint Lucia a world-class salary? And introduce Saint Lucians to the call centers? Remember? I want you all to remember? When we brought Ojo Labs? And it was the first artificial intelligence company to come to the entire Caribbean? He said, "Oh, that's mind-boggling technology." Today, the fastest-growing sector in the world is what? Artificial intelligence? And we did it here first? We were the world leaders in artificial intelligence? Here in Saint Lucia? And our kids did it better than anywhere else? That's who we are as a people? And that's what Labour Party is embarrassed about now? Is that they cannot rise to the challenge? They cannot rise to the, the, the desire of Saint Lucians? All they can do is keep us in a hole, a crab hole, and tell us it's good? "Oh no, you don't want to be Miami." So that's why, look! Instead of getting a world-class? Hospital? They're gonna go back to an eighty-year-old building? Instead of having a world-class horse racing track? They're gonna build something on the Kakabet? And want to convince you, as Nancy said? That Renault is doing it for free? Really? Renault is doing it? Renault is doing it for free? Really? The same Renault that's going to be the contractor? At? The hospital? What happened to the tender? What happened to going to tendering? It only applies to Flabot, it doesn't apply to them? What happened to the Banan's land? Who got the Banan's land? Land that was worth over thirty million dollars? And they sold it to Renault for two point seven million dollars? Where is the twenty-five million dollars gone? Who's benefiting? But he's going to build the horse racing track? For free? And what kind of horse racing track? Remember, they're the same people that told you? Horses before hospitals? Remember that? So they haven't finished the hospital, but they're gonna go and build a, a horse racing track on the Kakabet? Really? And you have one already? So when Philip Pierre realized that he got caught in a lie? He decided to change his story? And he said that? We were in breach of the Financial Act? And he only shows you the first two paragraphs? But doesn't show you the third paragraph that says? You can make exceptions? The same exceptions that they made? CDB, the money doesn't go into the consolidated fund? CIP, the money does not go into the consolidated fund? In fact, we protected the CIP money? And the first thing they did when they came into government was to change the act? To allow all the decisions as to how the CIP money was going to be spent? Cabinet? That's why I tell you? That's a slush fund? Not into the consolidated account? It's not just Saint Lucia? My friends? It's not just Saint Lucia? All over the world, developing agencies do not want to put the money into consolidated accounts of government? Because when it goes into the consolidated account? It pays salaries, it pays utilities, it pays debt, it pays everything? And therefore, historically? Projects slow down in their execution, because when they have to pay the contractor? There is no money? I want us to appreciate? The process to get the loan approved with Taiwan? So remember, we had borrowed twenty million? And when we came in, we ended up borrowing? Two hundred and fifty million US dollars? From the Taiwanese? A hundred and ten million dollars? Went into the Huenor Airport? And that debt for Huenor Airport was being paid for by the tourists? That's who's paying it? The thirty-five dollars? Every tourist that arrives, they, that money goes to pay the airport? Very few Saint Lucians, if you don't travel? You don't pay the tax? Only if you travel? So eighty-five percent of the people using the airport are the tourists? We then put a gas tax on of a dollar fifty? Because we were going to use forty-five million dollars US? To fix the roads? That's what Deadweight? Was trying to get done? It took him over four years to build the Salterbus Road? That's what Deadweight, so what is going on at the Millennium Highway right now? Is no surprise? Three years you can't fix the road? Somebody said something today? It's time for Philip Pierre? And it's time for Stevenson King to step aside? You all cannot do the work? Step aside? So? We applied to the government of Taiwan for the loan? When the government of Taiwan approves the loan? It now goes to the Exim Bank, which is like CDB for Taiwan? And they must also approve the loan? When they approved the loan? They advanced the contractor ten percent? And that's called for mobilization? But all the other payments that are made to the contractor? It's based on the completion of the work? So that means that OECD has to certify the work was completed? And the ministries in Saint Lucia must certify that the work is completed? So that means that they're doing the work first, and we're paying them after? So when he would come and tell you, "Oh, by allowing OECD to have the money, OECD could go bankrupt?" He's lied again? The money is not in OECD, the money is in Taiwan at the Exim Bank, the same way it would be at CDB? Now, if I thought that? The Prime Minister was sincere? And he was honest? And he really wanted to protect the coffers of Saint Lucia? When it was pointed out to him? That Ernest Hilaire? Opened up an account in the UK with Jufali? And had not sought permission to open up that account? When he had never told the people in Saint Lucia that he was getting money into that account? And when he never applied for any permission to borrow, to, to spend that money? That's in breach of the Financial Act? You cannot pick and choose what you want to do? If you are going to be a good governor? Govern everyone the same way? Don't come up and set one set of rules for one people? And another set of, of other rules for other people? When Ernest Hilaire? Went and used his name as the High Commissioner? And told the British government that the car belonged to the government of Saint Lucia? So that he could get the car duty-free? That is in breach of the Financial Act? Where's your voice? Where are you saying? When the housing is disposing of a major asset? And you know? That that land is worth more than two point seven million dollars? Richard Frederick? When he was the Minister of Local Government? When Stevenson King was the Prime Minister? Forced SNS to buy the piece of land in front of their building? Where the cars are parked? And he told them? "If you don't buy that land, I'm gonna let vendors go all the way in the front." And he sold that piece of land, eighteen hundred square feet? Two million dollars? That's close to a thousand dollars a square foot? But you're selling the lands at Banan's for twenty-seven dollars a square foot? Who is fooling who? If you so want to protect Saint Lucia's coffers? Then be a man and stand up? And don't allow that to happen in your government, you saw, you made a promise to all of us? But every day, Philip Pierre is breaking his promises? So I want to say this to you? When I listened to Philip Pierre speak with Stanley Lucien? And he said to Stanley? That he's only presenting the facts? And he's gonna let people speculate? So there's two things here? So either Philip Pierre? Does not understand how the Financial Act works? Okay? That's one, that's one possibility? So it means that when he spoke? He really didn't know what the Financial Act said? The second reason would be because he's lying? And so, he's prepared to lie to the people of Saint Lucia? To give you information that's a half-truth? And speculate? He should never be speculating? Before he opens his mouth, he should have checked to see what the facts were? Either way, either that he lied or he did not know? It's time for Philip Pierre to step aside? A young boy just got stabbed in cast trees coming from school, they tried to steal his? His phone? That's not United Workers' Party that's doing that, Mr. Prime Minister? That's the state of our country, criminals believe that they can get away and do anything that they want to do? And that is your fault? And so we're saying that the Minister of National Security must step aside? The ministers that cannot resolve the cost of living and did not even realize that? Even though you didn't put the levy on food? It's on everything else, which means that the cost of food was gonna go up? We saw that Kentucky Fried Chicken raised their prices? That's food? So the Minister of Commerce and the Minister of Finance, who's putting on that two and a half percent? They must step aside? The minister responsible for housing to allow a prime piece of land to be sold for two point seven million dollars? No tendering? And to be sold not even directly to Renault, but to his daughter? He must step aside? That's what has to happen in this country? But it's not going to happen in this country until we, as Saint Lucians, demand more? I said to all of us? We are living in fear? Did I say that to you? People are scared to say anything? People are scared to leave their homes? People are scared of losing their home? People are scared as to what's going to happen to them in the future? We are living in a state of fear? And to make matters worse? That Richard Frederick could go on a show? And say to Timothy Polian? "You better watch what you're saying, because I have files on you." That is to put fear into Tim? And so I want to say to all of us? It is time for us to stand up and to say? We stand with Tim? Because in standing with Tim, we're saying no to fear? No to intimidation? And our constitutional right to say what we want to say and think how we want to think? It cannot be that a government feels it can intimidate all of us? I know people are scared of losing their jobs? I know you're scared as to what you think that? Some of those ministers may do to you? But if you say nothing, it's only going to get worse, my people, it's not going to get better? So I say to all of us? Stand with Tim? Stand with Tim? Stand with Tim? Stand with Tim? Stand with Tim, because in- Stand with Tim because in standing with Tim, we are standing for ourselves and we're saying, "No more." No more fair in our country. And let us demand a better San Lucia for all of us. It doesn't matter if you are Flabot, if you are Labour, it makes no difference. The tax money belongs to all of us. The government belongs to all of us, and it cannot be that it's being channeled to the comrades, because that's all that is happening. So my, my fellow San Lucians, I'm going to say to you very clearly, we are in trouble. And the question was asked tonight, we don't need to be convinced that we are in trouble. We know that we're in trouble. So the question is, what are we going to do about it? Are you going to allow fair to continue to silence you? Because if you do, we're going to get into bigger trouble and deeper trouble. We need to hold this government accountable for the promises they've made. We must hold this government accountable to tell us the truth. You cannot so blatantly lie. As I said, the Taiwanese, everywhere you look in this country, every single community, you see the generosity of the Taiwanese government and the people of Taiwan, what they have done for us. And when you tell me that you're willing to put their reputation at risk just for political gain in San Lucia to cover up the embarrassment that you're feeling about how you're managing the affairs of this country? How embarrassed you are that after all these years of a New Labour, because the New Labour started in 1997, that's when the clock started to tick? What do they have to show? Ayea. And even the little things that they have done is not enough. They're not taking St. Lucia to the next level. They're not creating a world-class education system. They're not creating a world-class health system. They're not creating infrastructure that you can generate your own revenue from. I still say to San Lucians when I go around, when I said to you, "Ching, ching, ching in your pocket," it was your money that was in your pocket, not government's money. We were promising you a life in which you can earn your own income. Where are the banana farmers today? Where are the fresh produce banana farmers today? Where are the fishermen today? Where are the people in the tourism industry today? No airlines coming, and taxi drivers not moving, vendors are not selling anything, and the people who had money to go to your bars, they have no ching, ching, ching in their pocket so they can buy nothing. Do we really have to wait five years to see where this government is going to go? They don't have a clue. The same way they don't have a plan for St. Jude is the same way they don't have a plan for St. Lucia. The plan that we have came from the quadrant economic plan of Sir John, came from many of us who have experiences like I shared with you tonight, and a dream for a better San Lucia, a better San Lucia for all of us. So I say to you, Knight, I want you to go home, I want you to think about what you heard here tonight. And don't just think about it as being meipui because it was not intended to be meipui. It was intended to be a wake-up call to all of us. It is time that we do something about where we are going. We cannot continue to go down the road that we're in trouble. You don't keep walking down the road if you know that you're going to be in trouble, my people. You have to change direction. You have to go in a different way. And even if it means we have to stop for a moment and let this government know they cannot do with us as they will. Yes, we voted for them. Yes, they have the constitutional right. But there's also a right that they have to protect us and not to use the power of government and to weaponize it against the people of San Lucia. I thank you. Um, I just want to say one last thing. I got some sad news while I was speaking this evening, and that's a, a young boy from the Baptist family from Angers, um, sadly drowned today. Um, so if we can maybe just have a moment of silence for him, please. Amen. Life is a precious thing, and we all know that our lives are in one person's hands, and that's the great Lord. And we have to continue to have faith, but still for those who know the family, whatever level of comfort you can give them in this very difficult time, please do so. Amen.